I need CPR, but if I could get us to take a long time.
There are donuts here.
They have big pants to fill.
There are donuts here, if you need one, Ms. Alguera, or anybody else.
Thank you.
Help yourself.
I think we'll be just fine, just fine. Couple of things myself and Ms. Humboldt will be sharing with you. A lot of the information is reactive on students, knowing that we just were going through some proactive things, curriculum, professional development, out-of-school suspensions. I have provided the last five years, four completely, four complete years, and as of today, you can see those suspension numbers.
Renaissance isn't even in the same realm than it was a few years back. No, they have an increased number at Renaissance now. We have higher numbers at Renaissance, but lower, lower expulsions than we did in...
At Renaissance, that's correct. That's a correct observation, yes, sir.
And then, of course, the trend that we know we've been seeing is elementary.
Again, very observant, yes. The board definitely has their pulse on that. The next item I wanted to bring to your attention, which I know the five board members are very well aware, because these are brought to you at school board administrative hearings, and those are the zero tolerance offenses for the last four years and as of the beginning of this school year. I am happy to say that none of them affect the elementary level. They just involve the secondary level. My next slide is bullying and harassment incidences. You can see by looking at the last several years, we are declining in the unsubstantiated arena, as well as the unsubstantiated arena. I also would just like to bring to the attention of the board that received an email about a week and a half ago from Brooks Romanek, who oversees safe schools at the DOE, and she has commended our district in those numbers, and has asked me to email her some of the interventions and strategies that we do at the schools to make schools, students and students aware of bullying and preventive measures. So I'm excited to be providing her with that information and maybe showcasing our district. Any questions before I move it on to Ms. Humboldt's specific area?
Maybe try to provide that national, because there's a big concern. You have a good track record in the national.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Humboldt?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
This chart is for the average weekly absences. There are three full years, and then where we are year-to-date. You can tell that in some areas, they have continued to rise, some they have declined. I'm very hopeful that the year-to-date trend continues on. So that's through the first quarter, continues on in terms of the lower numbers and doesn't reach, you know, reach the higher numbers. I would like to just add, though, that the average weekly absences does include medical. So it's not just unexcused absences and excused absences. It also includes medical. This report is sent to the Department of Health once a week as a, like an illness surveillance. And then when the numbers are high at a school, Pam Carnavale, the health specialist, sends out emails to them, and then the clinics report to her, you know, how many kids, like, left with a fever, that type of thing. Because sometimes when the flu and different things are going along, it will affect the numbers, and the numbers will go up. No questions? This next chart is our student services report that we keep track of on a nine-week basis. So there's the 15, 16 years, 16, 17, and then where we are year-to-8 for 17, 18. And unfortunately, in some of those areas, the numbers do continue to rise. Threat assessments are what I would consider down a little bit, but, you know, self-injury, Baker Acts, a lot of those are, they, unfortunately, we have some, some issues that have to be addressed in our county, and we, we do have a high percentage of students, you know, are reports of child abuse, and of course, the Baker Acts.
Ms. Humboldt, are we reviewing them any differently? Like, child abuse, it looks like we're doubled last year's from the previous years, and it looks like we're trending in a similar way this year.
Well, you know, we stress very heavily to staff, to school staff, administrators, et cetera, the importance of whenever there's a suspicion to report child abuse. We're still, I mean, there are reports that we have that are, of course, not accepted, but I do think with the mental health training that we've had and just different resources and directions that we've moved in with focusing on students that have had trauma, et cetera, I, I think it's brought a greater awareness to teachers and to other staff members, and we probably are reporting, you know, as many or more, but I, I don't think that there are things that are just, you know, unnecessary. I mean, it's still a large, large number of those reports that are being accepted. Unfortunately, we do have a high child abuse rate in, in our district for, you know, and the three main things are the substance abuse, inadequate supervision, and domestic violence. Those are the three big things that are what keep our numbers high. Ms. Powers?
Every time I go into schools and talk to the teachers and show them what to look for, so there's going to be awareness of, and more, of course, physically aware, so you have a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, hopefully, we are getting those that, that are in need of interventions and help, you know, especially children that are in danger.
Are you, are you finished with that slide, or I have a question on self-injury?
Sure. No, you can go ahead.
Yep. Where, those are, those don't take place on campus. Those are recognized on campus usually, or can you expand on that?
I think some of them will take place.
Yes, sir, you're right. Some of them do. I would say the majority of them, at least over half of them, are, are either brought to someone's attention, or it's something that, you know, a teacher, or counselor, or social worker recognizes. But we do have instances where, you know, a student may have even, I mean, something that is theirs, you know, a pen or a pencil, and will do different things, you know, with it to self-injure. It's amazing the damage that you can do to your skin just with an eraser. And, you know, times that they're frustrated, or depressed, or angry, or whatever, well, where they will use a tool such as that to self-injure. I would say the majority of the self-injury that involves cutting with knives and things such as that, those are the ones that, we don't really see those in the school, because then that's a whole nother issue.
I mean, the Baker Acts, I mean, it's, that's a big deal today, right? I mean, as far as these increases that we're seeing, and we deal with middle and elementary school kids that we haven't typically seen in the past. So I know we've talked about that, and that's an issue that we all, I think, are aware of. Problem is, I don't really know the solution. I mean, we know some of the issues with social media, and the fact that they always have access to these devices, and always on, always connected, and all, and never really have a break from threats, or comments, or whatever, you know, is, is adding to it, but... What's your plan, or what's your thoughts on that?
Well, we certainly monitor all of these students, all of these students that are, either have a Baker Act on campus or off campus. We always do a follow-up when the student returns. Oftentimes, when the student is, if they're in a facility for maybe longer than 72 hours, there's somebody from the school that is keeping in contact with the parents. We, I, I think we've done a very good job of keeping our eyes on who these students are. The on-campus Baker Acts, of course, we know all of those, but truthfully, there, and I don't even, wouldn't even want to guess what the number is, but there are probably many more off-campus Baker Acts, but we don't always get that information. So even when we get word from a parent, or from another student, et cetera, that there's been an off-campus Baker Act, we still follow through with all of those.
So these off-campus reported ones are not, were not officially reported to us, they're just found out through a parent or through...
They're official. We don't get an official report on them.
Right.
Like, through the sheriff's office or anything. They're, like, like I said, a parent will reach out to us for us to keep an eye on the child, or, I mean, it's a number of ways. A lot of times, the student will, will produce that information to a counselor, to a social worker.
But there's, there's Baker Acts on your off-campus that weren't on this, on these statistics, right?
Probably, I, I, yeah, that's what I mean. We don't know of everything, so, and I think that's why you see that, you know, that those numbers in some areas are, are higher, the off-campus Baker Acts. You know, truthfully, I think some of the students are, you know, when they're at home or on the weekends, they're just, it's that constant with, like, you were talking about the media, and the trauma, and the domestic violence, and all those things that are in their home, and I, I think sometimes they don't hold it together as well as they can in a school setting where they are safe and where they feel like they're supported.
Somebody, remind me, the discussion that we had this morning with the new insurance, didn't that include dependents?
Yes.
So these children, or any of these troubled homes that we know of?
Those are employees, though.
And their children, he said.
I think dependents.
Dependents.
But they're not students.
Not students.
Oh, dependent, well, wouldn't that, dependent...
The percentage of them would be students.
If it's a faculty...
Right, no.
If it's a big...
Correct.
We have 14,000 students, and then we have 2,000 employees.
Right.
Yeah, so, you see, you need to care about, I mean, I have to take care of kids.
When the centers, we thought was going to maybe get a string of Baker Spring in here, that, you know, we'd hoped was going to provide maybe some services, and that hasn't happened, but it is still something desperately needed in this community.
And I'm meeting with them tomorrow. They have a new lady that's in charge of some things that really seems to be on top of everything.
Well, if there's anything the board can do to help, please let us know.
Okay.
What Kid was saying is, you know, when these students are identified, they just don't come back to school as business as usual. We keep up with those students. Their counselors are meeting with them, they're trying to make sure that they follow up with those students.
And, and not to, you know, pat my back and Regina's, but we try very hard to keep, we pull so many of those reports out and have it in a file of follow-up, follow-up. I, I can't tell you the number of reports that we call the schools on to say, you know, have you seen this child again? Because you start seeing the same names over and over again, and I kind of laugh about it, but we know who all these children are, and they have no faces to us. We just see names and, you know, the consistency in, in some of the reports with some of them. So it's not even just at the school level them following through. Many, many of them, we just keep on and on contacting the school to see how the kids are doing. Did you have another question, Mr. Dodd? I saw your...
Antenna.
Antenna, okay.
Well, no, just the comment, we've got to stay diligent, and I'm glad, you know, we've talked, we've met, and, you know, I still, I thank some of the social service agencies, I wish they could step up to the plate a little bit more. And so, you know, I agree with Mr. Kennedy, too, that if there's anything this board can do to, you know, get some people's attention, I'm all for that. Because this has got to be a community-based effort, it just can't be totally relied on the school district. And we've had an incident on one of our campuses that I hope we never see again. But when we see these Baker Acts come again, we've got to make sure we're standing on top of that. I appreciate Mr. Mullin, you know, talking about that, because that is vital to the safety of our schools.
Yes.
And, Mr. Dodd, with some of the articles that you recently wrote, those that viciously children with adults, it may be visiting that, having an article written, in your department, some department, and counselors, whatever, put in the newspapers to make the public more aware, to make them very step, because they're being told to be aware of many of the problems.
Right, okay.
And you could free up some of our counselors that do a lot of paperwork, and give them some time to counsel these children. With all the iPad for them, they can schedule themselves.
They do. And, you know, Ms. Humboldt, I want to thank you, I serve on the blessings board, which serves our kids in the after-hours and days and summertime, and you individually, you specifically, and then also through your coordinated efforts, have made vast improvements in that process over this last year.
Well, thank you. We've tried, the counselors have taken on some different things, as well as the classroom teachers, to try to make sure that we're identifying as many of those students as we can, so...
We're serving more students, we're improving that process, streamlining it, and, and trying to make it less time-consuming to kinds of counselors, who are already stressed for time, as we know, and so thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Ms. Regina, I know I'm a regular phone call that you, that you return or deal with, and, and it's hard not to say, well, have you called Regina Alli-Bretta's office? But thank you for always being there. Your student services is, you know, it, it is one of our first go-tos as our...
And you're always so happy.
She, she does. And, I mean, you know, six o'clock on a weekend night, and it's like, hi! So, thank you, Ms. Regina.
You're very welcome. I know people that also, they work with different agencies and the county, and we always have meetings with them, and making the schools who have a lot of places to access and acknowledge what's going on, and that's really something positive, because I can remember back when, when you did spend a bit of time there.
We, we have some good community partners and partnerships. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Kirby, why are you tail-end? You're the last, you're it.
I'm actually asked to go after student services, because of student services and exceptional student education, we just, we work together like this.
All right.
And so I just thought we should follow, follow them up. So, good afternoon. You know, when I was thinking about what to share with exceptional student education, it's a very broad world.
I love your heart.
Well, Amy's.
I love your heart.
Give Amy credit for, for this. I decided on three topics to share with you today. And one of the things I wanted to start off with was how we support behavior, which ties right into student services, kind of the state of our high school graduation rate, and the need for more inclusion. So, you know, it seems every time I talk to Mr. Mullin, the first thing and the most constant topic that we discuss are our students that are having behavioral struggles. And it is an increasing challenge each and every day to how to better support. You know, we're in a state of probably emergency when it comes to families at this time, not only in our district, but I think across our nation, that the families are, are declining. And, and their ability to support their children emotionally, and to provide that supervision and that guidance that perhaps we enjoy as, as youngsters, is, is not there for some of our families. So I wanted you to know that we support, our district supports positive behavior in many ways. One of the things that we do is we have a multi-tiered system of supports when it comes to behavior, and that's the idea that we teach every child in our district what it means to have high expectations, and we make sure that we set those out in each, every one of our schools, and we really emphasize that with our administrators this year. Under that umbrella is also PBIS, the Positive Behavior Support Organization. Now, they are a discretionary project that does work very diligently to try to support structures and frameworks for our schools, and we actually have a district approach with PBIS, so, and Ms. Humboldt is our fearless co-leader, that we basically work all together to try to support our students in our schools. And we have in our ESE district, or EOC department, excuse me, four and a half staff members that are dedicated to supporting positive behavior, or supporting behavior in our schools. They work under the MTSS umbrella, and you can see we have tier one, tier two, and tier three. So basically, how this works is when it works is when a school administrator identifies a classroom that's struggling, they talk to the teacher, and they reach out to the behavior TOSA that is assigned to their school. And so they meet, and they talk, and that behavior TOSA comes in. At the tier one level, they're basically coming in to look at the whole classroom, to, they're not evaluating it in any way, but they're trying to identify, are there inconsistent structures, or are there recommendations that they can make to better support that classroom? They come in, they observe, they look for consistency, and they look for effectiveness of routines. They make recommendations to support all the students, they meet with the teacher and the administrator, and have conversations to debrief. So that's where we are with our tier one. Then, once it's identified that, well, this classroom itself seems to be in good order, it's an individual student that is struggling more, we have something we call tier two, and that is more student-specific focus. And so basically, again, an administrator helps make that decision that we need to come in and get a sense of what is going on. They meet with that behavior TOSA, the TOSA goes in and observes, and this time, they're looking not only at the whole classroom routines, but they're really looking at how those classroom routines are positively impacting a particular student. That student should already be on some kind of progress monitoring plan, and be receiving some sort of interventions, perhaps on a weekly basis, it may be at something as simple as a check-in with the guidance counselor, but they need more support than that. That behavior TOSA, again, observes and tries to make recommendations after they've tried to determine why, why is that behavior occurring, and what does it look like? They will meet with the teacher and the administrator to go over some recommendations. They will often model for that teacher, and they will do, come up with plans, help tweak behavior plans to better meet that student's needs. Then they check back in with that teacher over a period of time to monitor and see how that is going. If we find that a student is continuing to struggle, they may be in the tier three, so only 5% of our struggling students. And in this case, this is a student that is definitely receiving counseling, is a student who has a behavior intervention plan, and who is continuing to struggle. So that behavior TOSA will go in. We've had situations this year where they actually helped to spend an entire week in a classroom to provide consistent reinforcement in a positive manner for students, to help teach them the expectations in the class. But they model, they provide visuals, they provide social stories, anything that they have in their bag of tricks that can better support a teacher and help make a difference in the life of that child. But the bottom line, when it comes to behavior, we know that it starts off with the relationship that we establish with that child, trying to identify the cause of the misbehavior, and trying to address that. Are their needs being met for food and for clothing? Do they have the support that they need to get to school? Are they attending school? Reaching out to the family and seeing if there are any supports that we can help, and help put all those pieces together for that child. Again, defining what a behavior plan could look like, and then ensuring that we're implementing it with consistency, and that we're always remaining as positive as we can to teach that child what the expectations are for school, and how we can help them, and how they can meet those expectations. So that's kind of what we do to help support behavior. And these are students, I didn't even clarify that, I'm sorry, that are not students with disabilities. This is for all students. Now, very often, through this process, they may be determined to be a student with a disability, but it certainly does not start that way. So questions about behavior? Yes? Well, I can tell you through the progress monitoring plan of the PMP process, parents are required to be involved in that. So I would say when a behavior TOSA comes in to observe a teacher, no, a teacher, a parent may not be involved in that aspect of it, because that may be more, the administrator needs, that that classroom teacher needs support in classroom management. So especially at that tier one level. But by the time it's more student-specific and it's a tier two, the parent is absolutely involved. And it's, again, through that school PST or PMP process that they have in place. You're right, because we have to try to get whatever we're doing in school to help carry over to home, and whatever is working at home, help it carry over to school. So it's a critical element. So my next topic is just a revisit of a slide that Amy had brought up with the graduation rate and disability status, and our question is how do we improve our graduation rate for all of our students? And I want you to know the answer is really one student at a time. Each of the high schools has, have processes in place in which they're able to identify students that are struggling and in danger of not meeting their graduation requirements, and they are working diligently, one student at a time. I can tell you right now, you can see Citrus High School has our highest graduation rate for students with disabilities, and they have been sharing their best practices with our other schools. We also work with Project 10, which is a discretionary project from the DOE, and we utilize many of their frameworks. Carl Anderson has created something called the Early Warning System in conjunction with Project 10, in which it helps us identify students early on that are in danger of not graduating. So it's able to look at things like attendance, and discipline status, and grades, and whether or not they've met all the testing requirements that they need to. But that's for all students, not just, again, students with disabilities.
Ms. Kirby, this is still also based, though, on the uniform graduation rate?
Correct, absolutely. It's lagging down.
It really, again, is missing information that also shows about completer programs, you know, even our transition academies, I mean, for cret students, that's the beginning, that's not the end.
Absolutely.
And, and I say that because unfortunately, the state's, again, looking at the wrong piece of information. They're looking at...
Do you have that on your ledger, Slade?
Yes, I do. And, and it's frustrating, because I know on the subsequent slides that you're going to talk about, it's talking about kind of trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. And, and I feel like this is a little bit of that. We're focusing on graduation rates, and I recognize some of the things that we want students to graduate with traditional Florida diplomas. But that's not the only way students can be successful, and we have a variety, a portfolio of options to get students to have success in post-secondary, but we're not recognizing those at the state level. And I just think that maybe in subsequent state, not now, but in subsequent state of the districts, I think we need to make sure we lift that out to the community, because we understand it, but it doesn't help, unfortunately, for just us to understand it. And we need to make sure that messaging gets out, because the public gets these reports, and they go, oh, my gosh, well, Crystal River, you're, you know, you're only graduating 60% of your students. Well, that's not entirely accurate, though, with disabilities, that is. So that's just my thoughts. And I know you know ESE is something I'm passionate about, because I don't, but I think we pigeonhole students in the wrong way.
Well, one thing that we will no longer have, or it will be used as readily, is the special diploma option. The special diploma, the only students that can have it are those that came into the, in their cohort of 2013, 2014. So the big chunk of special diploma students are already through. There may be a couple of, a big tier of seniors that would still have the special diploma.
But if I'm a ESE student, and I graduate with a, and take a test in June, I'm, I'm not going to be on this list.
And that's correct. The one thing that a student with disability does have the advantage of... The one thing that a student with disability does have the advantage of, if they have an IEP, is that they can get a waiver for state testing, and so that is in place. Now, if you have a 504, you cannot, and you have to pass the coursework and demonstrate that you understand the standards in order to be eligible for that waiver. They, of course, have a different withdrawal code at the end of the year, so the college that they might go to next year would be able to recognize that they did not pass that state mandated test, and might need more remedial classes before they get going, but it is an option that is available for students with disabilities. And so, the feeling now is that every student should be able to graduate with a standard diploma, using that option.
Do not our school grades, and maybe Amy, this is you I'm looking at, do not our school grades get impacted for each of those students that do not pass the FSA, but then pass by a different alternative means? Is that not a...
Do you remember for grad rate?
For grad rate, not for grad rate, but for, for our school grades.
Right, the grad rate is a piece, is one component of the district grade or school grade.
And if they don't, if they do not pass the FSA, but use an alternative means...
If they, that's still, if they have an IEP...
They're still, as long as they're graduating with their cohort group.
Correct.
But if in June they take the ACT and pass it, they are not part of that cohort group, then we are penalized. Because if, because they wouldn't be part of the graduation rate.
Correct, they would have been considered, right, being graduated after the four years.
And they would have hurt us when they initially got that level one on the FSA, so they would have counted against us for not passing at that point. But once they're actually graduating with a waiver, or even if they defer their diploma in order to stay working with us, for example, at the Transition Academy over WTC, those don't hurt us either way.
And my, of course, thing of this whole portfolio with HB311, is the fact that the state's effort through their tiering process, the former RTI process, was to say, we're gonna give them help, necessarily instead of labeling them. And then they're successful till they get to their standardized test, and they pass those exams, or they pass those courses, and they go, oh, you don't qualify for ESE waivers of the test, because you've been successful. So then the very students that would have benefited by that waiver are not able to get that waiver under the current system. And it's not a negative about our department's ESE, it is a statewide issue, and I go back to, again, because their work is irrelevant. It's actually only the test, and I go back to why HB7, HB311 must needs to pass. I mean, if we really wanna increase and do what's right for students...
And I would absolutely agree with you, because even if a parent, say, during the four years that they're in high school, if a parent decides in 10th grade, now this student's making the grades, they're doing well, if they decide to take them out of ESE, that hurts against us as well, and then they're not eligible for waivers. So you wind up kinda carrying those students all the way through, through 12th grade as an ESE student, where they may not necessarily, they may have compensated and overcome what was holding them back.
And there's some parents that have strong feelings, they wanna be on a 504 as opposed to an IEP, and when they get to high school, it doesn't help them to be on a 504 for a waiver.
It provides accommodations.
It will provide the accommodations, but it won't provide them with the waiver.
And the difference, of course, is specially designed instruction. Does a student need specially designed instruction? And if they do, then they need, they need an IEP. But if they don't, and they need accommodations, extra time, separate testing, even something like a science test read aloud, that can happen on a 504.
And I believe the challenge that we've talked about with going to computer-based testing, is that we may actually be making it more challenging to provide those accommodations for students, because we're able to provide those more readily available through the automation process than we are gonna be able to, now we're gonna have to go back to mainly reading the tests to students.
It's absolutely a challenge. Each one has its own set of challenges. But my next topic or last topic, it has to do with least restrictive environment. And remember, least restrictive environment is the place that we want all students to be able to have their education, so that they are provided with the least amount of supports that they need to be successful. You need to know that as a district, our least restrictive environment rate has not been good, as compared to what the district guys, compared to what the state would expect of us. Last year, we were at 55%, the year before, we were at 54%. The target for this year is 83%. So we're still very, very far from that, but the great news is, is that since last fall, we have been working with especially our secondary schools to help send this message. We had the Florida Inclusion Network, that works in conjunction with fiddlers, come in and provide some professional development for our assistant principals that are at the secondary level, and to try to help them see the importance and how they can schedule to have more students in a, in more inclusive practices. Part of this has to do with the block schedule, but it also has to do with our mindset that we have had, that we are better supporting students in a separate environment than we are in an inclusive classroom. And so we're trying to change that mindset and to help people see that students will rise to the level of our expectations, and so we have to find a way to help supply, provide the support that is needed for the teacher, that is that inclusive teacher, and then also for the students in that class. But on this chart, you can see, we anticipate, and this is based on survey too, so just last week's data, or where they're, where they were receiving their instruction. If a student is receiving, is spending 80% of their day with non-disabled peers, so they may have one ESE class, they are considered in a regular class placement, and we anticipate that going up to almost 64%, which is almost a 9% increase, so we're thrilled that that is a movement in a positive direction. You can see the resource room placement is from 40 to 79% of the time with non-disabled peers, and that actually has gone down some as well. Our separate class is our classroom that is more of our self-contained classroom, they're spending 0 to 39% of the time with non-disabled peers, and you can see that that actually has gone up a little bit. Other separate environments are Crest and hospital homebound, and that actually looks like it's going down somewhat, from 8% to 6.5%, which we would be doing a happy dance over. You can see the state is at 4%. Other districts that have a center of school are sitting in the 6 to 7% of their population range. So if we can get it down in that neighborhood, I think we'll be sitting in good shape. So, the work is certainly not anywhere near done, but we're actually moving in the right direction, so we're excited about that.
If you broke this out by elementary and secondary, does elementary not look much stronger?
Oh, elementary's incredibly stronger.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, we really have had that, that idea of a less restrictive environment in the elementary world through the inclusion model.
And we talked a little bit about the skinnies that the high school is doing, that they implemented this year, and I believe that it has helped somewhat. But if a child has a skinny for reading and a skinny for math, and they have two separate classes, guess what? That's a whole block, and they're, they're back in the same boat they were in. But I, I just have to take the opportunity to give kudos to Crystal River High School. They, Dr. Connors said, wait, we can do this, and just took her staff, and honestly, they jumped in with both feet, and they're, from our predictions, their rates are going from 38% of their students in a regular class placement last year, to this year at 77%. And that's incredible. All three of the high schools went up significantly, but, but Crystal River High School by far, we're just, this is their not seeing the job. And, you know, we hate to set all of our shores by this, but this is the same preliminary data we had last year, that we had looked at, and it was accurate, so we're feeling fairly confident that these numbers should be accurate.
The skinnies have helped, but we're still, the block is still a challenge when it comes to this issue.
It is, it is. But I, I can actually send you, if you'd like to know the preliminary on individual schools.
I just, I just more of, that was my understanding, was elementary.
And that's accurate. So, the next two slides are just slides that I took from Paula Kluth, and Paula Kluth is an intervention guru. Back in the 60s, she had probably one of the first inclusive classrooms back in New York State, when students with disabilities were just coming out of the hospitals that they had been kept in for all the years previously. And she shared with our, we had a group of 12, 15 people actually throughout our district last September, that got to go and see her. And so I just wanna remind you of some best practices when it comes to inclusion. I think we have to remember that every student is a general ed student first, that inclusive education is all about the students and not worrying so much about their labels, so we just need to look at what does that student need and try to address those needs. All students are educated in a general education classroom to the greatest extent possible. We have those high expectations. Of course, the instruction is aligned to Florida standards, individualized supports are available when they're needed, and that we make our decisions based on what the student needs, not their label, and not at our convenience on what, how we wanna teach. Last slide, it encourages differentiated instruction, and we know that that will help increase student engagement, that academic supports are available for each and every student, so that they can access the full curriculum, behavioral supports help maintain a positive learning environment for everyone, that respect to diversity creates a welcoming environment for all, and that basically inclusive practices make effective use of our resources. And I always like to end, inclusion is a process, it's not a place. We're never there, we are always in the process of trying to do a better job for each and every one of our students. So I wanted to say, thank you, thank you, thank you very much for your time, and are there any questions for me? Okay, it's my pleasure. Turn it back over to our Ms. Amy.
That concludes our State of the District, Part Two. Okay, thank you, and you can now go out for lunch.
I'd like to say on behalf of Ms. Humble and this board, you guys are incredible. Every single department, every single one of you, thank you. And I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.